Okay. It is looking, I guess, underneath here. They fixed the pool.
Yes, we have a crack in the pool that we temporarily fixed and it needs more work. We're losing some water at the same time that we do water, also there's chemicals. The cost of it, we have one quote here, we'll need to put up to bid obviously, but this allows us to get started on it. We might get repaired before the weather turns. Doing a little research on the cost of the new pool, it's well over a million dollars. And we invested eighty-some thousand, it looks like, here, or less. Not to exceed ninety-three-five, depending on the bids coming in, we can make sure this pool lasts us quite a few more years.
Well, I think, on the...
Oh, by the way, excuse me for interrupting. That's also to improve, we have a, we never opened the kids' pool this year, which we didn't have the money for the repair for that. That also may be included in this too, not to exceed ninety-three thousand. We definitely want to get the kids' pool open next year because we feel like we lost some business here.
Yeah, I think, or not this year, but in the past, when I had issues with that, right? So, you almost, or you, previous administrations almost had grandals coming up here.
Yeah.
But, okay, can I get a motion to put this out to bid and everything?
First of all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, we have tonight, I will recess at...
You're doing a request legislation, right? Correct?
Emergency legislation. Okay, I will request emergency legislation.
Yes. I just moved that we do, okay, emergency legislation.
Yes, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All vote, okay. Forty-eight, six forty-eight. Let me move on to the, if we can pay for it, right? Finance, let's go finance, right?
Do we have that too, same turn of roll?
No. Hey, I'm okay with, let's do it, now. You've got to find the money.
Plan A has to work, six forty-eight. That's all members in person. Okay, topic is school repairs, it's just been referred from PLOB.
Mr. Chairman, a question for the administration. How did the pool go this year? Did we have good attendance?
Yeah, we had a very good attendance this year. Last year was a perfect year because, you know, it was a dry, hot, sunny year. But revenue, I just checked it on Friday, we were up over last year, and then we took on the concessions this year, so that also gave us a boost this year. What was the total amount again?
It's here in your packet. The total, they went out and got a bid from somebody, it was eighty-four, or just a quote, eighty-four oh ninety-five. We added ten percent to it to request the legislation for that amount. You have the sample draft legislation attached to the back.
Where we gonna get the money at? Joyce?
Well, it's not the pool fund. We may be able to use some Philbin money on it, but probably the only place to go is the general fund, and we're pretty much running through reserves on that. But it's something that has to be fixed, so we, I guess you put it out to bid and see what comes back. It could be less than what this is, which would be helpful. But we're not going to know until we actually get bids.
Question from the committee?
No, how many questions? I mean, just looking at this, why is, like, the small swimming pool circling everywhere? Is there a reason for that on the paperwork?
Chair, any other questions? Why is the small swimming pool circling? We had a, long term is to raise money to put a splash pad in that area where the shoulders pool is right now. And I guess the thought was that we would not repair that and try to get the splash pad in there within, maybe next year, the year after, but I don't think it's going to be quite that quick, so we want to go ahead. I think, I think the small pool part of that is less than seven thousand dollars, so it is a huge expense to repair that. I've got to figure it out in my office, but it's well under ten thousand dollars. So we thought we could go ahead and fix that and take a little pressure off us, hopefully get a splash pad in there in two to three years. That's what I said. Okay, I guess if nothing else, we need a motion to help the associate director advertise the bid, repairs of pools. Move. Well, appropriate. What's the warranty? What's the warranty?
It's on the bid. We're putting up the bids and it's got to come back, right?
Well, I mean, we got this quote here, just don't mention a warranty at all.
Right. Yeah, so, yeah, we'll address that in what we, it packed a week ago. So there's, we're talking about the major crack that's in there, so I guess there's always potential for another crack to open somewhere, depending, I suppose, on the severity of the winner. But we'll make sure there's a warranty in there, and we'll consult with our engineers to determine what would be appropriate. I could type, it would be five years or ten years, I don't really know. I looked this over earlier today, but do you think it'll get done this year? Hope to. We want to get it done this year so we can open it next year on time. Are you going to be out there with the jet dryers when it's low fifty?
Yeah.
Well, if we can get it put out to bid and get it worked on, you know, we could see if we're done by the, you know, by the middle of October, or the weather's still good, could end it up too. So... Okay, motion?
Yeah, immediate motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
First by Mr. Warbaugh, second by Mr. Piper, and the associate director advertise the bid, repairs of the pool, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Here at six fifty-three.
Actually, I just give her, yes.
The regular meeting of Bussaras City Council for September the fifth, two thousand seventeen, is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Aye. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for George Fisher, who served on city council and was the planning committee chairman for the current city hall and chaired the addition of a hard surface runway at Bussaras Airport. We thank him and his family for his service, and may he rest in peace. Our prayers also go out to our friends and neighbors who were impacted by last night's storm. They caused so much damage in the North Robinson and Crestline areas. We hope for a speedy recovery of all those families, and we thank the Lord that the injuries were kept minor. Thank you. Roll call, please.
McKeever.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Truka.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Aurora.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes of the August fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Truka, to accept the minutes from the August fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen regular meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak to council. Anyone who wishes to address council this evening, please state your name and address.
Kurt Fanhauser, sixteen seventy-five South Sandusky, owner of a wavelength. I've got a contract that's nearing expiration in about five months for some vertical real estate that the city owns. It's a ten-year contract. Since it's coming up due here in five months, I'd like to see if the public lands and building committee could, if somebody could refer to that committee to get looked at.
I'm sure the administration, are you aware that there's a contract that expires with Wavelength that expires in five months? And are you going to put it into committee, or are you ready to put it into committee, or are you going to put it into committee?
We talked, we put that in committee once before?
The, sorry.
Go ahead.
The tower leases issue is currently in committee with respect to soliciting requests or proposals for operation and/or management of all of our towers. What may be rentable, what may not be rentable, even what value we have, because we don't know.
Okay. So maybe we need to start getting some information together on all of that because it is going to have impact on a few people. Okay? Okay? Thank you. Anyone else to address council? Communications and petition, the letter from the traffic commission.
We have a letter addressed to Bussaras City Council dated August twenty-nine from the traffic commission. Here in Health and Safety Committee, the city of Bussaras Traffic Commission would like to request the traffic control map be amended with the following changes. One, no parking on the south side of River Street between Sandusky Avenue and Tiffin Street. Two, no parking on the east and west sides of the two hundred to three hundred blocks of East Street. Thank you, Jeffrey, our research traffic commission, and that needs to be referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, I need a motion to refer this to Health and Safety.
So move.
Second, Mr. McKeever. Motion by Mr., Piper, second by Mr. McKeever, to refer the letter from the traffic commission to Health and Safety Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. We have our standing committee reports. Mr. Aurora, would you like to get us started, please?
The joint regular committees met on Monday, August twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
We note that that is a special meeting because it was not on a regular day.
And members of Mark McKeever, Dan Ross, Dan Warbaugh, Bruce Truka, Monica Sack, Bill Aurora, and Steve Piper. Members present, were Dan Ross, Dan Warbaugh, Bruce Truka, Monica Sack, Bill Aurora, and Steve Piper. Bussaras was called to order at six PM, public participation was done. Order of committee business, the finance committee called to order at six o'clock. Members of committee are Steve Piper, Dan Warbaugh, Monica Sack, and Bill Aurora. Now, we're present. Item one, various appropriations. We're detailed five appropriations requested by the auditor. A, from unappropriated funds, four thousand dollars, general funds slash program six transportation slash airport slash contraction services, for the city's five percent share of engineering costs, the airport's runway rehabilitation. B, from unappropriated funds, thirty-two thousand dollars, general funds slash program seven dash general governments slash law directors slash contractor services for legal services related negotiations. C, for unappropriated funds, fifteen hundred dollars in general funds slash program seven dash general governments slash custodian slash personal services to cover health insurance for the rest of the year. D, for unappropriated funds, ten thousand dollars, immunity motor vehicle license funds slash immunity motor vehicle license tax slash materials and supplies, purchase controllers related equipment for traffic signals. And E, for unappropriated funds, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, a new water filtration plant and distribution line construction slash water filtration slash capital outlay to cover change orders approved since February. Mr. Warbaugh made a motion requesting legislation to make the vote appropriations, and seconded by Ms. Sack. Motion passed by voice vote. I have two bill payment authorizations. The work detailed two authorization to pay requested by the auditor. A, four thousand dollars to pay Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly for services already provided for the airport's runway rehabilitation without the customary purchase order dated prior to the work being done. And B, thirty-two thousand dollars to pay Sash and Risk Company, LPA, for services already provided for legal services related negotiations without the customary purchase order dated prior to the work being done. Mr. Warbaugh made a motion requesting legislation authorizing the auditor to pay Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly four thousand dollars, and seconded by Ms. Sack. Motion passed by voice vote. Mr. Piper made a motion requesting legislation authorizing the auditor to pay Sash and Risk Company, LPA, thirty-two thousand dollars, and seconded by Ms. Sack. Motion was passed by voice vote. Work recessed, finance committee at six oh six PM.
Any questions or comments regarding the finance committee report? None? Moving on, fighting committee, Ms. Sack?
Fighting committee met at six oh six PM to six forty-eight PM. Members present, Steve Piper, Bill Aurora, and myself. Number one, manufactured home residential district similar use application. Bussaras Mobile Home Village, twenty-four Water Glen, has applied for a similar use determination in a manufactured home residential district, which would allow it to rent about twenty vacant, unrented mobile home lots to tenants who would place recreational homes or campers on those lots. An letter dated August tenth, two thousand and seventeen, and addressed the city council, the board of zoning appeals sought council to review of the application. Zoning director John Rochdesh explained that presently such a use is effectively banned in the city, where there is only one MHR district. The owners of Bussaras Mobile Home Village, based in Canton, have a state license permitting its use, but would still need permission from the city through a zoning amendment. The development wants the opportunity to rent out the lots for mobile labor forces in the area, such as Cretean type line workers. Bill Stoker, two oh five North Spring Street, and Kurt Fanhauser, sixteen seventy-five South Sandusky Avenue, both spoke in favor of the proposal, saying it would bring revenue to the city. Rochdesh explained that the proposal calls for allowing recreational vehicles for campers in the Bussaras Mobile Home Village as a conditional use in the zoning code, with stipulations to be determined. Piper made a motion to refer the matter to the city planning commission, the next step in the zoning amendment process, and seconded by Sack. Aurora voted no. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, Sack recessed the planning committee at six forty-eight PM.
Questions or comments from the Sack? None? Thank you. Moving on, Health and Safety, Mr. Piper?
Health and Safety Committee met at six forty-eight PM. Members present, Dan Ross, Bill Aurora, and myself. On item number one, ambulance contract. Ross made a motion expressing support of the administration's decision to extend the original two thousand fourteen contract between the city and the central joint ambulance district for one year to December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, with the second file, or motion passed by voice vote. As a provision, the extended contract is included within the original contract. Legislation is not required for the extension. Piper recessed the Health and Safety Committee at six fifty-nine PM.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Piper regarding the minutes of the meeting?
Yeah, a quick question. Should it be for one year or thirteen months?
No, it's thirteen months.
When do you extension? When does it?
Because it starts in November, and the extension was to go to June, December the thirty-first.
Right.
So it's thirteen months.
Right.
Okay. So we need to amend the minutes here for thirteen months to December. I need a motion then to amend the minutes?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Aurora, second by Mr. McKeever, to amend the minutes to reflect the thirteen month extension. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion passed. Okay, thank you. Missed that one. Would you like to finish now for us, please, Mr. Piper?
Okay, and there was no public participation, so Piper asked for a motion to adjourn the joint regular committees, motion by Sack, and seconded by Aurora to adjourn at six fifty-two PM. Motion passed.
Thank you. The Bussaras City Council Public Lands and Buildings and Finance Committees met in a special session this evening, Tuesday, September the fifth, two thousand and seventeen, at six forty-five PM. Report from Public Lands and Buildings, Mr. Wireball?
Okay. We met at, to begin at six forty-five PM. Members present, Mark McKeever, Monica Sack, Bruce Truka, and myself. We discussed the swimming pool repairs, looked at the proposal there, and I called, I don't know who, and right now, I'm like, who?
Mr. Truka, Mr. McKeever?
Mr. Truka made the motion to go ahead with those repairs, and Mr. McKeever seconded it, and all are in favor, and we adjourned at six forty-eight PM.
Questions for Mr. Wireball? None? Okay, moving on to that special finance committee. Mr. Aurora?
The finance committee met at six forty-eight AM to consider the referral from public land abilities referenced for the pool repairs, and made, there was a motion made by Mr. Warbaugh, seconded by Mr. Piper, to have the civil safety director advertise the bid for the project. The motion was passed. Finance committee concluded at six fifty-three PM.
Thank you. Any questions? None? Moving on to the traffic commission. Mayor Research, the June second, two thousand and seventeen, traffic commission minutes.
Yes, I have those. Would you like me to read those?
Yes, please.
Friday, we met Friday, June second, two thousand and seventeen, at one PM. Present, myself, service director, Mr. Wagner, police chief, Kepke, fire chief, Keller, and acting fire chief, Chad Schwendling. Kepke made a motion, seconded by Schwendling, to improvements made in fifteen, two thousand and seventeen, meeting, traffic commission meeting in the past. We had nine orders of business. First one was a ninety-day trial for three additional parking spots at the courthouse. Letter will be sent to Health and Safety Committee to recommend the traffic control act be amended. Number two, Hopley Avenue, school hours flashing light, Jeff Dunn will change the setting. Third, no parking side, no parking on both sides of Minnes, Jeff Dunn will look into traffic issues, and Chief Kepke will have the area control for more, for any traffic violations. Items tabled. Number four, no turn on red sign at Marion Road, Beal Westbound, the sign is down. No turn on red, no sign at South Sandusky Avenue, Beal Westbound, letter will be sent to Health and Safety to recommend the traffic control act be amended. Number six, Bill Lightsey was on the agenda, but was not present at the meeting, so we tabled that item. Number seven, new business, there was no new business. And number eight, there was old business, we were discussing Cherry Lane parking. Mayor will talk to the six homeowners towards Euclid, ask if they will try to park, so vehicles are not on both sides of the street at the same time, allow emergency vehicles to pass freely. Add it may need a ninety-day trial for no parking on one side. And number nine, Chief Kepke made a motion, seconded by Schwendling, to adjourn at one twenty-three. Motion passed.
Any traffic questions for the mayor this evening? Mr. Aurora?
Item eight, Cherry Lane, as of yesterday, is still the same. I'm, when I'm down there, I'm looking at, I was, had questions whether the parking will get through there or not.
That's because I forgot to ask you.
It's only ninety days.
I know. I'm like, soon as I saw that in the minutes, I said, oh, okay, I will give them definitely in two weeks, by the next meeting.
Any other questions? Traffic, Mr. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, on your letter previously to council about the no parking on East and River Street?
East and River. Two and three hundred block of South East Street and South Side of River, from...
No parking on the east and west side of...
Right.
But, and River, South Side of River.
Okay, sure, sure.
But my question is, my question is, the signs are already there.
No, there's no parking sign.
Yeah, they don't say no parking already.
You have to realize, these are June the second minutes. So all this has really come to council, but we don't get the minutes until they approve them at a later, a later meeting. So we're like one cycle behind on minutes.
They've been there for years.
No, we had a ninety-day trial.
We did legislation for that. We have already done the legislation, in fact.
They sent it to Health and Safety, so I don't understand what...
And it came out of Health and Safety, and it came to full council, and we passed legislation.
This is, this is a long time ago. This is ninety days, so we passed it, and these are just minutes from that one meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions about traffic, the mayor?
Well, I'm sorry, it's not about traffic. I need to backtrack.
We're backtracking to...
To the finance minutes.
Backtracking to finance.
And the legislation for authorizing me to pay, they kind of caught me by surprise because I wasn't expecting specific numbers in here. The four thousand dollars for Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, that would, I had appropriated four thousand dollars, you know, for general fund for the city share, but the bills that I have from, from CMT that are past due are eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-five cents. So the legislate, legislation saying not to exceed four thousand dollars isn't going to work. And I haven't seen this prior to tonight's meeting, so that's why I was, and the thirty-two thousand for Sash and Rich, that shouldn't be a problem because we don't owe them that much at this point. But the four thousand is a problem in that other piece of legislation in resolution two twenty-six, twenty-seventeen.
Is that, could that four thousand dollars be the, of what we actually have to appropriate because we have the credit from the land that was donated to us by Mr. Mrs. Aurora?
Well, the four thousand dollars is, is our, is to cover our five percent of the total contract.
Okay.
And that's what I had appropriated, so that I could do the PO and split it out, you know, five, five, and ninety.
Okay.
But the actual bill, which I'll be splitting between our share and the airport grants, is, I think the contract seventy-two-five or something like that, but what we actually owe them is over eleven thousand dollars right now, that we've already got bills for. So I'm not sure how that can be reworded to allow me to do that and continue on with that purchase.
Well, eventually, you did do a, get a, a purchase order for it, didn't you? Wasn't part of it paid by a purchase order, and part of it...
I haven't paid any bills to them for this particular contract. This contract was signed in January, and I just got copies of the contract a week or so ago. I had the bills ahead of that. And the bills are, are for work that they've done, well, now through the end of July. I've got one that's done through June the thirtieth, and one through July twenty-eighth. But I had to go back and pull the bills for this, I couldn't remember exactly how much it was.
Okay, because the minutes state that we did from unappropriated funds, four thousand dollars. dollars, for the city's five percent share of engineering costs.
Right.
So that was, that's part of the appropriation...
That was part of the appropriations, and that's, and that's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct. Appropriations are correct. It's the resolution authorizing me to pay Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly for the work that's already been done, says not to exceed four thousand dollars.
And it should say what?
Well, I would say not to exceed twelve thousand dollars at this point. Because I may still have a bill coming in for all of it.
Law Director?
Well, the, the problem I see is we don't have a, we don't have anything from Finance Committee asking for an authorization to pay...
Well, here's the four thousand dollars.
The, the four thousand.
That's the second four thousand, that's not the first four thousand. Because up here, under appropriations, we did the four thousand dollars from the general fund, and that's in the appropriations legislation. The four thousand dollars she's referring to is the one that's back here on the back page, that should be eleven thousand, or twelve thousand dollars.
All right, so we have two pieces.
Yes. There were two pieces of legislation, actually, three pieces, because we needed the other one for the attorney piece.
Still, we have, we have the limit.
Do you want to go back to Finance and come back out again?
Two suggestions. One, either it does, e- either way, my recommendation is that it goes back into Finance, but we can do partial now, get the four thousand to them, and then go back to Finance for the remaining seven thousand, whatever it is, eight thousand, or we can send the whole, take a blue back out, do one, do one.
Okay, why, why don't you just pull Resolution two twenty-six, twenty seventeen, send it back to Finance, and we'll just redo it? Just the one?
Okay. Because we, there's a specific, the problem is, there's that specific number in the minutes.
Right. And I couldn't be at that meeting on the twenty-first, or I would have caught it then.
Yeah.
Okay, then I need a motion then to pull two twenty-six dash twenty seventeen and return it to Finance Committee. Second? Motion by Mr. Ork, second by Mr. Piper. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, we'll pull that piece of legislation then.
Then you need a motion to refer it back to the Finance? It should, technically, it's still in Finance, I think.
Yes, it's still there, until we actually do the legislation, so, uh, so the Traffic Commission was done. I need a motion to accept, uh, the committee minutes and related committee reports as amended collectively. Motion by Ms. Sac, second by Mr. Ork, to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Report of city officers. We'll start with the Manors Report, if he's here.
Here. Okay. Okay. What is it? Uh, thank you, Madam President. First of all, uh, tonight, six-thirty, we promoted our, uh, Ms., our captain, Steve Sargel, and, uh, it's an honor to do that. Steve has been, is here since, I think, around the year two thousand, roughly, so he's been a, a member of our fire department for almost two decades, and has done very well, so, um, glad to have him, and, you know, safety force is such a huge part of this town, it's important, so the, the safety forces of the community are never, ever overstated. Okay, well, let's go right to Eric Rowey, and maybe if you've noticed, he's already in town, there's some workers, and if you've driven by the, the blank wall, it's not blank anymore, it's got, the design started, I think you're going to love the design, uh, they're down there working tonight even, and I would, if I was you, try to, try to get there every day to see it, uh, and, you know, artists at work is, is fun to watch, stand back there and just stare at their palette, and this is a big palette, and thank God it's him, because I have no artistic ability, and I'm not sure any of us in this room does either, but we're glad to have him in town. We took him to lunch last week, and, you know, he's retired, and so this is, you know, he wouldn't come out of retirement just for anybody, he loves this town, and we're glad to hear, have him here. Virginia Hammond Tree was honored, uh, a couple of weeks ago, at a, uh, award ceremony in, uh, Massfield for this region, which is Region Five, Crawford County Volunteer of the Year. Uh, I knew Virginia was busy, I had no idea she was as busy as she is. She's in so many things, it brings, uh, enthusiasm, hard work, organizational ability, ability to get along with people to have a project, uh, she's involved in Rotary, you know, she worked so long in the, uh, the telephone, the telephone, the auction, raises so much money, hundreds of thousands of dollars she's been responsible for, and her team, uh, she works the Christmas parade, the backpack program, many, many others. Matter of fact, uh, the day after the award, I was walking to the bank, and where was Virginia? She was on the tractor watering flowers, you know, so, Jimmy, she's into everything, so I thanked her for that, too, I thought that was kind of ironic, but she does not rest. We congratulate her and thank her, and so she's, uh, somebody to emulate. You also noticed Gary Cole last week, some of you were at his retirement party, um, he was a driving force in this county for so many things, and especially for Land Bank, he did a tremendous job, almost single-handedly starting Land Bank, his idea and researching and following through, and he got people excited about it, it's been a pleasure of working with him and watching him work. He's retiring, but he will still be active with Land Bank. Last Friday was Gary Cole Day, I was under damn proclaim, uh, a day in his honor, so we wish him good luck. Next week, you all know, you put a, had a notice there about what's coming up next Saturday, our new water treatment plant will be dedicated. Tours begin at ten a.m. Have a dedication ceremony, try to keep it short, at noon, we have a lot of dignitaries coming in, uh, the whole community is invited, and tours, uh, will continue after that ceremony, and they will end at three, so we hope all of you are there. It's good to see this chair in council chambers again. Thanks for coming, and I think that's all I've got.
Hey, any questions for the mayor then? Mr. Ork?
Earlier today, I got an email from a citizen, reference the, uh, Old Miller Park, I guess its place keeps on broke, and, uh, I've been there numerous times, taken numerous pictures.
Right.
And I guess my question is, is, is it going to repair, be repaired, is so, when? Are you going to notify the citizen?
We repaired it once, but I, I don't think it was quite to the standards that, uh, we, we wanted, and so we got the email again today, so it's, it's already been taken care of. I took it over to Jeff, and he said he's, he's got people on it, and it will be repaired immediately.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else with questions for the mayor? No? Moving on to the Service Director's report.
Yes, for the Service Director, the airport project started today. Dellinger's, uh, the project company that is doing our Southern Avenue project near the YMCA, is, uh, starting back up tomorrow, and they have about, uh, two weeks to go, and when it's all done, we'll be paving Southern Avenue. We're working on the bulk plants for the bulk station, we have a couple bids for that. If that was, Jeff, in his notes, put if it was part of the, uh, change order, it would have been quite a bit more expensive. Letters have gone out to all the customers who are bulk water, and they know that they'll still be able to get water at the old water plant until the new one's installed, expect to have it done here this fall. For waterline work, um, it began, Boris Company is, uh, is working again, they're up in your neighborhood, right?
Oh, yes, they are there.
They are very good workers, very fast, very efficient. It's going to, uh, continue from Southeast Street to Nora and, uh, to Oakwood. Um, the, along the way to repaving of State Route Nineteen and a Hundred, which was supposed to start three weeks ago, is actually starting next week. Expect that to go pretty quickly. Uh, we have, uh, work that they authorized for the fire station, and Sarg, the bids have been in, uh, Frank Sodercarroll has the bids, um, there was a fairly wide discrepancy in the bid prices, so we're double checking, make sure it's apples to apples, as Jeff mentioned in here, and we should have those ready to go next week. Spooktacular, which has been a staple of the community, and has been especially successful since it moved to Old Miller Park, is Saturday, October twenty-second. All of you took part in that, you know it's a great thing for the city. We still need some funds, and, or if your group wants to be part of the event, you can call Brett at the fire station, five six two one three five one, and, uh, we look forward to working with you. And, last thing Jeff wanted to mention is, uh, there's a lot of problems on Southern Avenue area from east to west, and the rail company, Norfolk Southern, decided to repair their rail crossings at the same time, and it's, I, we realize it's very inconvenient, and when it's done, it'll be opened up just as quickly as we can get it, get it open, so, just have patience with this. All this progress takes some time. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, questions or comments, Mr. Ork?
First of all, I guess, the railroad, uh, repaired at least twice, the four times they go across Beal. Down at, uh, Sausanduski, the railroad track, then, they're not doing any, there's no one there. Why don't they open it up?
Sausanduski?
Got swan down there.
South of...
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, something. I don't know. I'm, I'm assuming they...
I think they got completion date at the end of September, I mean, I don't think it'd take much more than a week if they would...
I haven't, but, we'll look at it tomorrow and see, if they, if they started any work at all, that's not a track, not navigable.
Well, it's just blocked, there's no one down there.
Have they done any removing of the asphalt at all?
I didn't look at that, I mean, there's no one working.
Okay, we could have some look at that tomorrow and see.
And the other thing is, when I was here earlier today, uh, Mr. Branstad was here, and talking about the pavement on Southern Avenue, and when I left, they're unsure from Kaler to where, is it pavement, do you know?
The whole, all of it's going to be paved, but we're talking about curb problems from Kaler to Spring, and we're probably going to have to put some new curbs in, uh, in those two blocks, but all of Southern's going to be repaved.
Well, I know, they weren't going to do it all at once. He didn't know whether...
You lost all the curves.
Didn't know whether they're going to stop at ninety-eight or, or Marion Road.
Yeah, I, I don't know the schedule on that, but, uh, he's meeting with Chuck Kimmer on tomorrow, and they're going to discuss a timetable. Do you want me to get back with you?
Yeah, we're having somebody come Thursday.
Second?
We can do that.
Anyone else, questions? Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Atlas?
Thank you, Madam President. No written report, over you, um, attached for last week, so, do you know?
Things are quiet in town.
Well, it was a very busy, uh, weekend, a lot of issues, and, obviously, the audience is more than...
Yes. Okay. Any questions for the Law Director? None?
I got one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wireball?
Yeah. Do you have anything on, I think it's eleven-twenty Elm Street? Is that, uh, apparently our house is, we've had, they've run cuts, I guess they've been, they've called here, apparently, but I'm...
It, um, it doesn't ring a bell, um, but I'll, I'll check into it, see if it's on our list, we have, um, Mr. Grove has filled up, uh, three file cabinets already, so...
I know he's, I know he's...
Only from knowing everyone, to, um, knows a lot, so I'll, I'll follow.
Mr. Ork?
Well, since he's been picking up, I'll pick up one. I talked to you earlier today about Hopley Avenue.
Yeah.
And, uh, you had me go on, so I made a mistake of going by there and saw the wreck in the driveway.
Yeah. Kind of pile of debris.
So some can be done soon.
Maybe, we went by today, um, uh, actually, we were inspecting a couple of other houses that are, we, uh, people that actually do that kind of work, um, reflecting some other houses on the north, north side a little bit, and came back through there. We gave another citation for the, um, trash and junk cars and debris, we have to wait ten days after that citation before we can do anything. All we can really do is criminal charges, and we've got those pending, um, we've got several layers of those. The home is not structurally unsound, the warrant, uh, you know, condemnation, uh, it is a situation... It is a lifestyle situation, uh, with respect to the, the people that live there, and we are trying to navigate that, that problem, both, uh, through the courts and with other area agencies, uh, that specialize more in that field. Also, it comes down to the landlord, and their responsibility for ensuring their property is, is secure and safe and clean, um, there's not, there's not a lot we can do, um, as far as, you know, sending the crew in and just picking everything up and carting it off. It is property, um, no matter how, what we would consider it, uh, junk vehicles can fall under a separate area, um, where there's one man's garage sale, there's another man's, Monday or Friday morning, uh, they can occur, um, so, so those are, uh, those are issues that, that we have to deal with there, um, it's, it's a problem, it's been a problem for about two years now, I think.
Okay, is there a...
Another area before it was there, at the same...
Is there a landlord?
Charges, criminal violation of property rights.
Okay, what about the tenant?
Then it is, uh, in the process of being charged for, uh, trash and debris, uh, junk vehicle can be towed, but again, it's one of those, we give, give notice on the junk vehicle, because that's fairly new, uh, on that one, that's the van that's parked in the front, um, but again, one man's trash is living his treasure, and, uh, and our property rights, that we have to be aware of.
I didn't see any man's treasure in that driveway.
It is a problem, it is a problem.
Okay.
For, for the whole lot.
Mr. McKeever?
Isn't it also that a certain judge doesn't want them in his courtroom?
Well, we're navigating...
Due to the...
We're, we're navigating, uh, a number of issues with respect to the family, and, um, how to best, um, proceed with, um, those charges. Criminal charges on the go so far, our civil fines, and fines, uh, the trash, uh, penalties in our code, penalties for trash are one hundred dollars a day, per day, you can be cited each day, and it's, um...
Well, that'd be quite expensive, because it's been two years.
Well, but if you don't have the ability to pay, um, one dollar's as good as a million if you don't have it.
That's correct.
And so, that's, that's an issue we're dealing with, yeah.
Anything else for the Law Director? Okay, I'd like to go back one step to, since you're sitting for the Service Director today, what am I supposed to do with my trash tonight? What am I supposed to do with my trash tonight? I mean, everybody, take it over to the Service Director's house. I mean, should we take it to like the side streets and things that they can get down? Yeah.
Let me see, let me see if I can answer quick for the beans over.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sure this has happened before.
I'm sure it has, yes. I've also discovered that you can only have one-way traffic in alleys, yeah. Now, Auditor, Ms. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President, for that happy note. You have my stating of acquisition for August thirty-first and the revenue tally's the budget and the income tax comparisons. And I do have a couple of referrals tonight. We need to establish the 2018 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Fund and the 2018 Victims of Crime Act Fund. This is for our Victim Advocates New Grant Year, which starts October first, so we need to get that legislation in place. We'll also need to appropriate the necessary funds for the first quarter in each of these grants. And I would also like to refer the bond anticipation note for our Sewage Disposal Fund that we had budgeted, this year's budget. This is for the new sewer line on the ODOT Plymouth Street project. And I requested an updated spreadsheet on the numbers for that sewer line today. And I will be bringing the information to committee as soon as I receive those updated numbers and I get the legislation from our bond counsel. So I won't be ready on Thursday, I don't anticipate that. But I wanted it in committee so that, once we have these numbers and I get the legislation, we'll be able to move forward. Because ODOT will want our share of the money for the project before they get started.
What has become the start date for that ODOT Plymouth Street project?
Supposed to go to bid in October, last I heard. It'd start after the first, just shortly after the first of the year. And I'll find out where those folks can put their trash too. That's where I live, so I'll need to know that.
They'll need to know that, too. Okay, so we have, these both go to Finance Committee. I need to motion them to establish the 2018 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Fund and the 2018 Victims of Crime Act Fund and do appropriation for the first quarter of this, the rest of the year, for the last quarter. And also, the bond anticipation note for the ODOT Plymouth Street project also needs to go to Finance. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ward, second by Mr. Trucca. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. We have the Treasurers' Report for June of 2017. It was amended and returned to you. I need a motion to accept and file it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Piper, to accept the Treasurers' Report for June 2017. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. You also have the Treasurers' Report from last meeting for July of 2017. I need a motion to accept and file that one.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sax, second by Mr. Wirebaugh, to accept and file the Treasurers' Report for July of 2017. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Police Chief is not with us this evening, nor is Fire Chief. I need a motion to accept City Officers' Reports.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. Ward, to accept the City Officers' Reports. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have visitors in regarding reports of standing or special committees and the city officers, or somebody else has something to say. Nothing? Okay. No one? For consideration and proposed legislation for the first time?
We have three pieces of legislation. Ordinance number forty-one, twenty seventeen, a mediating and supplementing ordinance number fifty, twenty sixteen, being the annual appropriations ordinance for twenty seventeen. By appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of four thousand dollars to the contractual services line item within the airport category within the Program Five Transportation Subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars to the contractual services line item within the Law Director category and fifteen hundred dollars to the personal services line item within the custodian category within the Program Seven General Government Subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated Muni MV Licensed Funds the sum of ten thousand dollars to the materials and supplies line item within the Muni MV Licensed Tax category within the Muni MV Licensed Subparagraph. Finally, appropriating from unappropriated new water filtration plant and distribution lines construction funds the sum of four hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars to the capital outlay line item within the water filtration category within the new water filtration plant and distribution lines construction subparagraph and declaring it an emergency. That is referred to Finance. Ordinance Resolution Number Two Twenty-Seven, twenty seventeen, authorizing and directing the Visirus City Auditor in behalf of the City of Visirus, Ohio, to issue a warrant or warrants as the case may be drawn upon the appropriate appropriations or appropriations to retroactively pay Zashin and Rich Company LPA for legal services on labor negotiations not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars without the customary purchase order dated prior to the billing date and declaring an emergency. That's also referred to Finance. Resolution Number Two Twenty-Eight, twenty seventeen, authorizing and directing the Visirus Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the City of Visirus, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into contractor contracts not to exceed ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the repairs to the all-miller pool. Finally, authorizing and directing the Visirus City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriations or appropriations and declaring an emergency. That's referred back to public lands and buildings.
Do I need a motion to accept this as the first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Ward. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Ordinance number forty-one dash twenty seventeen is referred back to Finance Committee. Resolution Number Two Twenty-Seven dash twenty seventeen is referred to Finance. And Resolution Number Two Twenty-Eight dash twenty seventeen is referred to Public Lands and Buildings. This is where we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone care to address counsel this evening? Another one? Do we need a recess this evening? No? Okay, committee reports on pending legislation. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable to ordinance forty-one dash two thousand and seventeen, various appropriations, and Finance is favorable to Resolution Two Twenty-Seven dash two thousand and seventeen, authorization to pay labor negotiations.
Public Lands and Buildings?
Public Lands and Buildings favorable, favorable to Resolution Two Twenty-Eight dash two thousand and seventeen, the swimming pool repairs.
Okay, I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept the reports. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation. For the second, I'm sorry. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number forty-one dash twenty seventeen, which are the various appropriations, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Award?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-one, twenty seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance forty-one dash twenty seventeen?
So moved.
Piper?
Yes.
Award?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-one dash twenty seventeen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance, Resolution Number Two Twenty-Seven dash twenty seventeen, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency? This is authorization to pay labor negotiations.
Second.
Sax?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Award?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Resolution Number Two Twenty-Seven, twenty seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Two Twenty-Seven dash twenty seventeen?
So moved. Second.
Award?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Resolution Number Two Twenty-Seven dash twenty seventeen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution Two Twenty-Eight dash twenty seventeen, which are the swimming pool repairs, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Award?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Resolution Number Two Twenty-Eight, twenty seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Two Twenty-Eight dash twenty seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Piper?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Award?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Resolution Number Two Twenty-Eight dash twenty-two, twenty seventeen is duly adopted. Moving on, old business. The updated open project lists are in your packets. And I need to, we received the updated codified ordinances from-
Water Drains.
Water Drains. And we need that to go into Finance Committee. I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Ward, second by Mr. Wirebaugh, to put the codified ordinances update into Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Any other old business anyone would like to bring up? Yes, Mr. McKeever?
I don't know how old this is. I got a text message from the municipal president and I do not appreciate that. You sent me a text message and you addressed it to the rest of the council.
I don't believe I addressed it to the rest of the council.
Well, it said it was a brief message, but whoever may have received it.
I believe I only sent it to you.
Maybe. I did not appreciate that. I have a right to vote the way I vote.
You do, but you were selected by, you were selected-
I voted by conscience. And anyway, my vote wouldn't have counted because it was three to one if I would have voted the way I wanted to vote.
I agree with that, but I-
I'm just saying, I have a right to vote and saying, abstaining is a vote. And if you have a disagreement with me, I appreciate you address me personally and not text me or have a vote to anybody else.
I didn't send it anywhere.
You may not. I'm just saying, I did not appreciate that. And we're going to disagree.
We are.
And there's other members here that disagree at different times with me. And I have pulled that. And I'm not arguing, I just don't appreciate that you text me like that. So, that's all I-
Any other old business like to be brought up? New business. September the sixteenth, the dedication of the new water treatment plant. Tour start at ten a.m., dedication is at noon. I believe that you have received an invitation to come out and help in some manner, way, or the other. It's going to be a very, very busy day out at the new water treatment plant and we're going to need all the help that you can provide. So make sure you get back to either the council clerk or over to the mayor's office as to who's available and what time shall be available on that day. On September the sixteenth is also the unity in the community. It's the southeast corner of Washington Square, starting at one p.m. And on September the sixteenth and seventeenth is also the Hoy Trinity Parish Festival from eight a.m. to five p.m. Busy weekend. Anyone else with newer miscellaneous business they'd like to bring up this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, through the miracle of texting, I was able to get an answer from your refuge pickup.
Okay.
And Mr. Dunn said that, well, that is normal, you know, a smaller truck apparently going through your neighborhood.
Okay, all my neighbors. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
I've got, I've got some referrals since September and who've been off all summer, kind of. I thought we'd get back to work a little bit, so. Some things that I've been thinking about, I'd just like to refer them before the end of the year so that we can get the new committee, we don't really have to do anything Thursday on them. What I've done is, the information I've collected, I have here. You can take home and look at it, then we can talk about it, whatever. So I'm going to rattle these off and I do have a list for them. But the first two, I believe, would go to Finance. I'd like to see us budget money to the DARE program. So I don't know if that's in the plans or not. And I'd also like to budget money specifically somewhere for sidewalks. I know, though, you've, we've got that there on the, yeah.
We have sidewalk issues all over town, yeah.
So, but I think maybe if we can get it budgeted and maybe, maybe look for grants and things. And, and I still, so you got those? I'd like to continue with the annexation issues that we've talked about. That's already in committee, but I would like to bring that up again. Parking and parking lots. There's a couple of new businesses I know that's coming to town. And if everyone just really, really parks all day long, it could hurt these businesses. That's what I'm concerned about. And I think I've talked about this before. We've talked about dumpsters in the city. I took a half-hour trip, probably no more than a half-hour. And you'll see some of the pictures here, so. I get accused of taking pictures of trash, so. It's just, I think it's, I think it's at the point where it may be getting out of hand and maybe we should look at it before it gets out of hand. And I know this, this might not excite a lot of people, but I would like to look at fifteen-dollar minimum wage for the employees of Visarus. City employees is something we can look at. I think most of them make that. I think it would be showing the rest of the community that, that we need to raise wages. Maybe some other entities would take it on and raise their minimum wage a little bit. And then this is the Denado's issue here, where we'll need to rezone that probably again. Or that's, does it make sense? But that whole area there, this is the fourth time, at least, that area between Poplar and Charles. Or, yeah, between Poplar and Charles, that whole area, I think, needs to be rezoned. If we could just look at that sometime.
It's time from Poplar to Walnut to Sandusky to send out, oh, Charles to Oakwood.
This whole area all the way down to the bank or somewhere in there. Somewhere we need to expand that because we're constantly, a new business. If a business wants to come into town, then they can, you know, part of the work's already done. It's neighborhood business or whatever, I don't know.
That's already been, that's still in-
That's still in planning.
That was in there, we never paid it. We talked about it.
We brought that up before, maybe. And maybe, or maybe not, there's something we can do with the last one. Ways that we can accelerate, getting these DARE cones into, you know. I mean, do we need to make, can we make it thirty days instead of ninety days or some, things like that to move the process along faster? I think there's houses that we've been working on. And I know you guys are doing all you can, but is there ways that we can, we can improve that, you know? So, and I think that's kind of already in, in committee, too. Those are the things I'd like to look at before the end of the year.
You say that last one's already in committee?
Well, I mean, DARE cones and all that.
Specific ones, not in general. If you wanted to review that, that would probably go into planning. Okay. Okay, so if we start at the top of the list, then the items to go into, the items to go into, I'm going to go through all these and I'll do a motion on them all, if that's okay with you. Discussing adding the DARE program to, sending it to Health and Safety Committee and to Finance. The budget for sidewalks to Public Lands and Buildings and Finance. Parking, and the parking lots to Public Lands and Buildings. The dumpsters in the cities to Health and Safety. The minimum wage for city employees to Finance. And review of zoning to the Plating Committee. And the acceleration of DARE-like properties also in Plating Committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, so we'll get all those added to the open project lists that you already have. Anything else this evening? Or newer miscellaneous business? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I want to welcome Kim Gassers back, who's working for Carver County now. Welcome back, Kim. Glad to have you here.
Anything else?
Yeah, is there any way, we're going to run EMS in the city. Can we get a detailed plan on how we're going to do that? Staffing, pay, budget, and the Health and Safety Committee relatively quickly?
Okay, we'll.
Excuse me, as soon as we open the water plant and as we work through the budgets, that's going to be, you mentioned before that we have something ready to go, like Charlie after the first year.
Anything else? Yes.
I'd like to make a public records request before the text message that the county president sent to Mr. McKeever.
Anything else? Okay, I need, the joint writer, everybody's here this evening. Joint writer, committee meetings are referrals from this council meeting and any open project list items may be discussed during the committee meetings. The referrals from the scene are.
We have five, and then we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven more. The first five, the codified ordinances update, that goes, that's from Council of Finance. The traffic map changes, that's from the administration to Health and Safety. The crime victims funds, that's from the Auditor to Finance. The authorization to pay at the airport for the resolution we pulled, that's from the Auditor to Finance. And the bond anticipation note for Plymouth Street, that's from the Auditor to Finance. That last item is not for Thursday's agenda, the other one, two, three, four are. And then the following, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, from Councilman Wireball. The budget item for the DARE program and Health and Safety Finance. The budget item for the sidewalks, Public Lands and Buildings and Finance. Parking in the city parking lots, Public Lands and Buildings. Dumpster in the city lots, well, throughout the city, Health and Safety. The $15 minimum wage for city employees, Finance. The zoning along South Sundezky Avenue and adjacent streets, that's in plating. And the DARE-like housing situation, that's also in plating. That's it.
Okay, the next WBCL radio program is on Wednesday, September 13th. Mr. Wireball, have they contacted you when to record it?
No, I guess I'm supposed to contact them, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay, they'll do that tomorrow? Okay, it's due for the 13th. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Rourke, second by Mr. McKeever, to adjourn. We are adjourned at 8:06.